All right, so I'll go ahead and start recording it if you all want to get started.
Well, let's see, how many do we have from the planning commission? I see one, two, three, four, we have five. If we knew if anybody else was going to be joining us. We knew Sarah wasn't going to be. I don't know about Brown.
I can type, text Mike Yanshaw if he's not on yet, we need Mike Yanshaw.
He is not on.
Hello, this is Mike.
Oh, Mike, there he is.
I had a little trouble, I'm not sure why.
Okay. I was just getting ready to text you to see if you were available.
Well, thank you. I got a second. Covid vaccine today afternoon. And I felt great all day yesterday, but this afternoon I've got minor symptoms, but lots of symptoms. Headache, fatigue, lots of symptoms, so. And fogginess, fogginess, so.
Mike, that comes on like that, but then it goes away quick.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not worried about it, thanks David. No, I'm not worried about it at all. My wife, we women, she has no symptoms. Anybody else gotten their shots?
We're all too young. I had my first one, I'm due for my second one here at the end of next week. Got real lucky, I had the appointment from my mother, she's eighty-four. You weren't doing younger people and I got there, she was the last appointment of the day, the pharmacist says, I got one left, you want it?
Sure. Comes up, yeah. Why?
Exactly.
Seems like in the past we've had Mr. Horst has had problems getting under our meeting, I don't know if he's going to be joining. Mr. Brown has had a few that he's had to miss. He's had some issues connecting in the past, too. That's probably. Probably all we're gonna get, do we want to get rolling?
Do we have a? Seven oh four, if we got our quorum, let's go.
Yep, we do. So what I'd like, what I'd like to do is start off with a Fudge of allegiance, but I just want to say welcome Grand Blank Township, planning commission meeting, March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. And I'm going to stand up and we'll start with the legend. From a roll call standpoint, what we're going to do is have planning commission members identify themselves and your presentation from at least the township and county, I guess. So, let's see, I'll start off. Dan Gelling, Grand Blank Township, Genesee County.
Larry Anderson, Grand Blank Township in Genesee County.
Jay Johnson, Grand Blank Township, Genesee County.
Vince Banderski, Grand Blank Township, Genesee County.
You got Dolores, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Dolores Coulter, Grand Blank Township, Genesee County.
I think that's the extent of. Pardon me? I think that's the extent of planning commission members, we have our attorney, Mr. Laddie, you want to go next?
David Laddie, Grand Blank Township, Genesee County.
We got our planning consultant.
Hello, Jill Bame, in Port Charlotte, Sarasota County, Florida.
A little warmer there.
Hello.
And Matt Wojahowski in Hazel Park in Oakland County.
Anyone else we missed?
Hey Dan, we've got a call, another call in user, I don't know if it's anybody on the, the commission members, but I'll check and see.
Thank you.
Brent, Brent X. Grand Blank Township.
All right, well, whenever we go to public comment, I'll unmute you if you have something to, something to say.
Okay. So, next item on our planning commission agenda is to approve the agenda, I don't know if there are any changes proposed.
This is Vince, I make a motion that we approve the agenda, it is written.
Motion will support.
Motion by Larry Anderson. Motion by Mr. Banderski to approve the agenda as presented, support by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. I don't know, I presume that Dolores was. That's the one part that's a little. All right, so we have three sets of meeting minutes from November and January that we need to approve as well, Mr. Banderski, you want to take us through November fifth?
Yes, yes, I went through the meeting minutes for November fifth and there's one minor typo correction that has to be made, but given that, unless other commissioners have a comment, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes as will be modified.
Any other changes from anyone? Okay, motion by Mr. Banderski, support by.
Support.
That was.
Sounded like Ryan, excuse me, Jay Johnson.
Yeah, Jay Johnson.
Thank you, Jay, I'm not too good with the voices on this. The motion to approve and support of that motion was by November. Yes, yeah. Meeting minutes. I guess we'll go again, all. All those in favor. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Looks like it's six zero. All right, next up we've got November eleventh meeting minutes.
Yes, I've gone through the meeting minutes of November eleventh, which was a special meeting for us. And there is one typo, which will be modified, but given that, everything else seems to be in order. So unless other commissioners have a comment, I would make a motion that we approve the November eleventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes, as will be modified.
Okay, motion, motion to approve November eleventh minutes by Mr. Banderski, support by, let me just raise your hand. Let me make it easier. Well, you, you, you made the motion, need somebody to support the motion.
Mr. Anderson, I will support.
Okay, support by Mr. Anderson. Lots of those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 All right, looks like we have. We have one more left.
Yeah, I, this has to do with the January seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting and I reviewed the minutes and find everything in order. And unless other commissioners have a comment or make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of January seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, motion to approve the January seventh minutes by Mr. Banderski, support for that motion by. Who was that?
Who was that?
Who's, who made the most, who supported that motion?
Who supported that motion, sorry. I'll, I'll support them all, support them all.
Thank you, Mr. Yanshaw. Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye, guys. Mr. Cap.
Oops.
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, I've got six oh approval on that as well. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda would be an opportunity for a public comment, and this portion of public comment is reserved for anything that we are not having a public hearing on, we do have a public hearing this evening, and it's going to be in regard to discount tire special land use. So if you want to talk about that, that will come up here very quickly on the agenda, but if anyone would like to address the planning commission on anything other than that, now would be the time. So, I guess Robbie, unmute.
Yeah, if you've got, if you look at underneath your participants column and you got a hand raising button under there, if you would do that, otherwise I can unmute you and if you want to speak, I'll just announce your name. Mr. Shroom? Okay, do you have any comments, Mr. Shroom? Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm with the discount tire group.
Okay, very quickly here.
I'm not sure who the, I forgot who the call in user was, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I just want to speak on the discount tire.
Okay, very quickly we'll get to that. All right, it doesn't appear from what I'm seeing, anyone that has anything to bring up this portion of the public comment, so we'll close that public comment. Go on to correspondence, I do believe we received planning zoning news through the mail. Couple of issues there, I believe. I don't think there's any other correspondence that's been received other than that, unless anyone on the planning commission has something that they've received. So, that would take us on to old business, of which we don't have any for this meeting. So, that will get us to new business, which is the special land use and site plan review for the discount tire. Now, Ms. Bame, our planning consultants, did you want to kind of take us through an overall presentation? Site plan review committee has seen this from a preliminary review standpoint, but it's now forwarded to the full planning commission for a review and consideration of the special land use. You can take us through.
Sure. Yeah, good evening, everyone, I'm Jill Bame, Township's planning consultant, partner with Giffords Webster, also with me tonight I have Matt Wojahowski, who's an associate planner with Giffords Webster. I thought I would just give for the benefit of the residents and interested parties, a little bit of background about what a special land use is, and then I'll turn it over to Matt and Matt can go through the review letter. So, this particular use is considered to be a special land use, and special land uses are land uses that would generally be permitted in a district like this one, there may be certain characteristics associated with individual pieces of property that are zoned general commercial throughout the township where uses like these and others that are listed in the ordinance may either not be exactly appropriate, or they may need other conditions attached to them to mitigate some of the impacts that have been identified by the township as maybe being problematic or inconsistent with other adjacent land uses. So the process for special land use is the site plan review, and in this case, I believe it was in January that the site plan review committee looked at the preliminary site plan review and as is customary for the planning commission, following preliminary site plan review by the site plan review committee, it goes to the full planning commission for approval of the site plan, as well as a public hearing on the special land use and approval of that, and final approval rests with the planning commission. We'd like to go through the presentation of the review of our letter, identify any issues, hoping that that maybe answers some questions that, that people may have, but after that time, it'll go back to the planning commission, you'll have a public hearing open for the people to make their comments. Once that's closed, then it'll come back to the planning commission for discussion and questions of us as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt, and Robbie, you may need to let Matt be the presenter as well.
I guess before we get to Matt, I just realized that, I don't know if the applicant has anything he wants to say about the project before we start going through the review letter, or just kind of want to go through that. Ryan is, what is that? Is Ryan able to speak? I don't see Ryan, I think he must have dropped off, so I guess.
No, I just had him, had him a presenter, or not presenter, but a panelist, so.
Okay, Ryan, can you hear us?
Yep, I can, so, um, yes, I would like to go through a presentation, I don't know if that's, if you would prefer that I do that now, or if you would like Matt to go through his letter.
I think his letter is in response to what you submitted, so I, to me, it makes more sense if you can give us a brief overview of the project and we'll, we'll go to Matt, that's okay with everyone?
That sounds good, is it possible for Robbie to allow me to share my screen so I can pull up some graphics?
Can you turn your video on? It should be done, it's about to start video, and then I can make you a presenter.
Yep.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, you should be good to go now.
Okay. Okay, well, just wanted to say, my name's Ryan McEnhill with ENG, also with me on the call is Bill from, from Discount Tire. Just to give you, I guess, the board, just a brief history of this project. Actually, almost a year ago now, back in February of twenty twenty, we brought this project in front of the planning commission with a slightly different store. At that time, some of the staff and the planning commission members had some preliminary concerns about the noise levels potentially from this particular use. We took those comments into consideration, we had prepared a response letter and submitted it to the township, but unfortunately, due to covid, the March meeting got canceled, and then given the economic uncertainty that happened around that time, the project ended, ended up getting pulled from feasibility. And so later in twenty twenty, when things started to recover, this project got back into feasibility for the property, which actually, you know, gave us some time to, you know, make some comprehensive changes, I guess, to better address some of those comments that we got from the staff and the planning commissioners at that time. And as Jill mentioned, we've been working with the site plan review committee members, met with them in both December and January to address their comments until we got here today. So just some general operational things about discount tire. This is roughly a ninety-eight hundred square foot building that we're proposing, discount tire only does tire and wheel sales for passenger cars, they don't do anything else. That is their core business, they don't do oil changes, they don't do brakes, they don't do batteries, they don't do anything of that nature. Now, the store is typically open from eight AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. They typically service about fifty to seventy-five vehicles a day. And there's no overnight parking of vehicles allowed, so it's a little different automotive use than what most of these sites you're probably accustomed to. They do have all of their, their tire storage, both new and dead tire storage within the building. Now I'll kind of go through a, the floor plan and the building as well to kind of show you how all that, that works, and then just one final thing is they do not have any hazardous substances stored on the site as well. So just getting into a little bit of the building design, again, I mentioned that we've made some pretty drastic changes to the building, and I'll also show some renderings, but the previous building had, which is their prototypical store, had three bay doors which were facing Case Avenue. And we made significant changes to the building, and this new store cost discount tire a heck of a lot more than their prototypical one, but we wanted to make sure that we addressed the noise concerns that were brought to our attention. So this, this particular store is designed to get rid of, get rid of the three overhead doors facing Case Avenue and modified it to what they call a drive-through building, so cars will enter into the store, get serviced on, there's four service bays, and then drive right out the opposite side, so everything done is completely inside the building itself. So this is just the elevations of the building, you can see it's a aesthetically very pleasing store, I did want to show the floor plan as well. So, when we say the drive-through building, so this would, the residential properties would be at the back here, Case Avenue, over on the right, Saginaw, up here at the frontage, so cars would actually enter into the store, get serviced completely inside the building, and then drive through out this other side, you can see here is the tire storage racking system. They also have mezzanine level as well, so they're able to store all of those tires completely inside the building, and then obviously the sales display area here at the frontage. And, I guess, going a little bit further on the the noise study. We did have a site-specific noise study done in November of twenty twenty. We took noise measurements from the exact same type of drive-through building that they have in Scottsdale, Arizona, I think there's only two of these particular buildings in use right now, one in Arizona and one in Florida. So we're actually able to get data from the exact same type of store, and then we also did specific work on the ground in the field at this particular site to make sure that we put a noise study together that was site-specific, and the conclusion of that noise study, which I think you may have in your packets, is that the potential noise level at the nearest residential property is in, in compliance with both the townships and the city's requirements, and the potential noise level is quieter than the existing average ambient noise level at this particular site, and when you look at this site, you know, obviously we have Saginaw Street, which is a five-lane roadway, heavily trafficked, there's, you know, there's obviously a lot of noise that's generated from that, and then you also have four sets of railroad tracks on the opposite side that, in our research, found that there's three trains a day going through that area. So those are all pretty significant noise generators, so the conclusion from the noise study was pretty favorable to this particular discount tire. So, I did just want to go through briefly the site plan review drawings, I'm sure a lot of you have already had a lot of time to look at these, I just wanted to point out some of the elements of the site plan. Discount tires in the, in the layouts themselves are a lot driven by making certain that we can get a truck movement around the building. That's really what drives the aisle widths and how we set things up, where driveways are located. One of the comments in the Giffords Webster, and actually was brought up in our site plan review committee meeting was we wanted to alleviate, if you see this truck turning path, you can see that there's some encroachment on that center island. So we've actually made modification to make certain, this is our revised layout, which we did send to Jill and Matt last week, which now you can see with that modification, we have addressed that comment, there's no longer that spill over onto the center island there, and that truck can actually make that movement and get around the building out to Case Avenue. From a utility standpoint, we do have to cross the roadway to get to the water main on the opposite side of Saginaw Street. There is water main on Case Avenue, but it's only a six inch and wasn't capable of, of providing the level of water service and fire suppression that we needed for the building. Sanitary sewer service is available on the store side of Saginaw Street, which makes that pretty simple, we do have a sand oil interceptor that is basically taken from the truck, or from the service bays and routed through that sand oil interceptor just as a measure to prevent migration of potentially oily type liquids from leaving the site. This, the current site has no stormwater infrastructure at all, everything sheet drains to Case Avenue and out into the city's storm sewer system, so we are proposing a significant improvement to the stormwater for this site, it will be underground detention, given kind of all of the site constraints, obviously, with how small the site is. So that would be an improvement as well. And then I did just want to touch on the landscaping, especially as it relates to the residential properties. Obviously, that's a concern, we want to make sure that we had a good barrier between this proposed use and the residential properties. There is a nice mix already of a very large mature trees that we wanted to try to salvage, so we basically have three levels of vegetation here at this rear property line adjacent to the residential, and they kind of range in height from short to medium to tall. The first layer is kind of amassing of shrubs, that would be on the front slope of that landscape buffer. And then the second layer, we, we are proposing kind of some medium height evergreen trees with some dense branches to also act as a noise barrier, and then obviously that third barrier is the existing tall deciduous trees that we want to try to salvage and keep in place as well. We do know that the ordinance does say that a masonry wall, I think of six feet in height, can be placed there, or we need to have a waiver to do something differently. We are certainly open to providing a masonry wall, we just felt like this was a better design, more natural, and was probably going to solve the issue just as well as, as a masonry wall, so that's something if, if the commission prefers a masonry wall, we can go that direction, it was just something that we thought might be a little more natural and more aesthetic. So the next thing I wanted to talk about was the traffic impacts. Again, I mentioned at the beginning that. Again, I mentioned at the beginning that um. Discount tire typically sees about seventy-five to um a hundred cars a day. Um forty-five to sixty of those are are for service and then the rest of those, about thirty to forty vehicle trips. Um are for air checks. Um the level of of trip generation to this particular store did not check any of the boxes for um. Any of the the of the traffic impact studies um that were listed in the ordinance, just because it's it's not a a high generator. Uh we do know that there is a driveway spacing requirement in the ordinance as well. I think it maybe three hundred and twenty-five or three hundred and fifty feet between um driveways. And which along this corridor of Saginaw Street isn't met very often. Um we propose the driveway off Saginaw Street just for functionality. Um you know, again, when you look at that truck turning movement. Uh it was something that really makes this site difficult to only have one driveway off Case Avenue. Um when we were looking at this, we did agree that you probably want to avoid left-hand turns off Saginaw Street into the site. Obviously, that can be problematic. So we thought that a right turn uh right in, right out um. Would provide, you know, something that's a safer situation, but allows people um another access point to Case Avenue. Um and then would also restrict those left turns as well. We did have communications with the County Road Commission early on. Um they they did. Say to us that they didn't have any specific issues with with the driveway location as presented. Um we did have uh the correspondence, who I believe was with Corey Jarboe um at the County Road Commission. As well. Um we are planning to make significant improvements to Case Avenue. So between um our driveway uh up at the northern side, all the way down to Saginaw Street, we intend to reconstruct. Um with new curb and gutter. So that's another um improvement that would be done um as a part of this project, because it is in desperate need of uh of reconstruction. And then uh just a couple of final things. I did want to just touch on some of the special land use things. Um because we really do believe that that this particularly use and what we're proposing is really in harmony with. Exactly what's out there today. So you can see we have this general commercial corridor all adjacent to the R three district. Um as I scroll down here, you can see all of these automotive uses that are just lined along this corridor. Um adjacent to uh the R three district. Um you have Volkswagen of Grand Blank, that's a hundred and twenty-four feet uh the building from the R three district. Kia of Grand Blank is a hundred feet from the R three district. El Sarah Cadillac is a hundred and twenty-five feet from the R three district. El Sarah Buick GMC is a hundred and thirty-eight feet from the R three district. AutoZone thirty feet from the R three district. Um and then. Also have uh Bell Tire, who I did have a graphic up, but I'm not seeing it up here on my screen. Is two hundred and thirty-five feet um from the R three district as well. So those are all things that we just feel are um. You know, they're obviously not not meeting that requirement, but we feel like this particular use and all of the. The measures that we've taken to try to reduce the impacts um are pretty substantial. And then I did want to show you guys those renderings, but that's part of the the uh JPEGs that aren't showing up for me. I might have to pull those up again real quick. So this is the the rendering that we had put together.
Um we're we're not seeing it, Ryan.
Not seeing it? Okay.
Still seeing the aerial view of the site plan.
Okay, let me um. All right, let me just go through one more thing and then I'll I'll stop sharing and reshare with those um. With those other other items. I just wanted to talk real briefly about the um the standards that were required um for auto automotive use. Um I think there's like nine standards and they were outlined um in the letter prepared by by Giffords Webster as well. Um and we can meet all of those criterion um in section four sixteen, except for. Um there's item number four point one, six point two, which um talked to the fact that overhead doors um. Could not be facing a public street or a residential property. Um and being on a corner uh corner lot um with a residential use on one of the remaining sides. Obviously, really limits the ability of us um to meet that criterion. Um we obviously significantly reduced the number of overhead doors when we switched to this new building. Um. And they're all completely screened to the residential district. Um so that's one criterion that we can't meet to the T, but we are doing everything we can to. Be as much in conformance with that requirement as well. Um the other two that uh. Giffords Webster brought to our attention, obviously, was the masonry wall at the uh residential property. And again, we're more than happy to provide the masonry wall. Um if if the commission feels like that's a better. Um use for that that location in lieu of the landscaping that we have proposed, we're more than happy to provide that wall. Um so we can meet that criterion. And then the other was the the hazardous substances on site, which I just clarified last week that there's. Um no hazardous substance being proposed on site. Um if uh the commission would like us to prepare. Um uh a PIPP plan um for some type of of leakage that were to take place, we can certainly do that. Um but we felt like we met all of those criterion, except that overhead door location. So I'm gonna stop sharing for a second here and see if I can pull up um. Can you see those photos now, the renderings?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to show these, because um this would be uh taken from Case Avenue. Um looking towards Saginaw Street. This is what the the showroom would look like. You can see if you're looking from the residential area, you're not seeing any overhead doors. Um you wouldn't even really think this is a a tire and wheel store. Um unless you can see the tire, the tires and wheels in the showroom there, but it doesn't look like your typical tire and wheel store. Um. And then let me pull up the other one. Does that come up for you?
Yes.
Okay, and this would and this would be the look from Saginaw at the corner of Case Avenue. You can see the overhead door there. Um but again, just a really aesthetic building. Um. It's certainly gonna gonna cost discount tire much more to build this type of building than their prototype. Um. But they did take uh the staff and the um the commission's comments seriously about about the noise and. We feel like all these measures have really um addressed those, I think above and beyond and. And we hope that um you take all that into consideration. So that's all I I have. Um appreciate your time and obviously we're happy to answer any of your questions.
Are there any questions from the planning commission before we go to uh our consultants? Review letter?
Thank you. I guess I I have one question. Yeah.
Okay.
Um may maybe this will go into two. Um you stated you have between seventy-five to a hundred customers today with approximately forty-five or so of them, just being air checks. Looking at the site plan, it appears that there are approximately thirty-eight parking spots. Is this parking sufficient for a store that size?
So discount tire typically shoots for thirty-five to fifty parking spaces. Um. They prefer more. It really just depends on the store. Um obviously, the weekends um get extremely busy. Um so thirty-eight is on uh the lower end, I guess, of. Of what they'd like to see, but it's it's in the range, I guess, of of their stores in Michigan statewide.
Mr. Anderson, this is also in excess of what our standards are for. And those parking spaces for a building of this size. And the like plan review committee felt that. Um as you did, we didn't want cars parking out on Case Avenue or on the lawn or anything. So. It was appropriate to have this number of parking spaces.
Okay.
Which is act like I said, actually in excess of what our ordinance requires.
And just looked at the size of that parking lot and thought about the number of vehicles that they had stated, just seemed like it may. Be inadequate. I understand how there's another tire struggle further north on Saginaw Street. It's got a lot more parking spots. It's always taxable. However, I believe that one does vehicle maintenance and such as well, so that's not an exact comparison.
Yeah.
Hello, this is Mike.
Mr. Yacho.
Dan. Yes, I have some concerns about noise. Pardon me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
I have some concerns about noise. The uh I the the report that we got uh that uh calculated the noise from another. Discount tire store was from uh Scott Field, Scottsville, Arizona, I believe. And I I want to see if that's an accurate comparison. Does does that store, because of the location in the south, does it have air conditioning on its inside bays?
No, sir, it does not. This is Bill Schrum from Discount Tire. And I've not only worked at that store, I'm at the corporate headquarters right next door. And it does not have air conditioning in the bays, nor will this one.
So during the daytime, do you operate with the doors open?
Yeah, we, part of the parking concern as well, I'd like to share. Uh we have an average turnaround time of no more than twenty minutes. So with five working bays, we can, we can turn basically fifteen cars an hour. And at a total of roughly, you know, seventy-five cars a day to a hundred cars a day. About thirty or forty of which are going to just be an air check that's driving in, getting a free air check and then leaving the business. Uh the parking will be sufficient, as well as the the noise level would be nearly identical to what you will see at this site as well.
That was a concern that I had because uh of the different environments that we are in versus where your test location was.
Um yeah, and as Ryan.
For your.
No, no problem. As Ryan also alluded to, we not only did the noise study inside that building because it's identical in layout. To pick up any of that ambient noise we would have. We also actually went and did that su- the site study on the site that we're looking at. To see what the levels would be difference-wise between having that the building with the drive-through and just the two ends of the open doors. And what is existing today. So it should entail the whole thing in it and not be any louder for any of the local residents.
May I ask one?
Like that one second burst. I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just one other question I had as I was thinking about this too is. The truck traffic we talked about at the beginning of the presentation. Uh I know these tire stores, people that get deliveries in daily. What time of the day are the delivery trucks expected to arrive, multiple times a day, once a day, or how's that that work out?
Thanks for asking. Actually, uh we we have what we use as a cross-dock facility. And for the Michigan region, it is stationed in Indiana. And all of our manufacturers bring the tires to that mixing warehouse for us. So this particular store location, just like the rest of them, will only get one delivery a week. And that will be usually scheduled, it'll be either like a a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, depending on the route. And they was that delivery takes place anywhere between seven in the morning to six at night. And would take them probably about thirty-five minutes to unload the truck and the truck would be back out uh of the parking lot. Uh the dead tires that we store on site, those get picked up typically once a week as well. So we have two semis that are coming once a week is all. And the reason that size store is built the way we've done it is we can house the amount of tires we need for a weekly basis. So that we're not getting truck deliveries every single day. Now you will see a UPS or a FedEx guy pull up from time to time, but the semis will only be a once a week. For delivery and once a week for pickup.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Mr. Uh I was gonna say, Mr. Yacho, did you have something you wanted to bring up before we move on?
I'm good for right now. Thank you.
Okay. All right, was that Mr. Banderski?
Yeah, I have a several questions here. First off is uh. Ryan, the distances you gave that uh to the adjoining residences, will you provide that to the planning commission in writing?
Yeah, we've we've provided it um in previous correspondence.
Okay, then if it's in the office, we'll get it, but I have not seen any of that. Uh secondly, relative to the wall. Uh you have large deciduous trees, but uh at this time of the year, there are no leaves. Is that correct? So the dampening effect is going to be more minimal than uh than in the summertime. Uh A three, page A three, still shows the north elevation, which should be the east elevation. And we've talked about that a couple of times. Uh construction sequence schedule still shows twenty twenty. Is there a reason for that, that you haven't updated it? That's on the six of nine. And then my last question is, have there been any changes to the drawings since our last site plan review on January twenty seventh?
Yes, so we um after we received the letter from uh Giffords Webster, which would have been maybe two weeks ago now. Um we not only addressed some of their comments, but also incorporated the comments that you had. Um a lot of those, I did send a specific sheet like A three. That change has been made. We did pass that on to them. Um so all that stuff ha- has been addressed.
Well, you could call it a trick question, but the latest date on any of the drawings is uh one, seven, twenty-one. So most of the others are are dated uh three, two, twenty. So if you're making changes on any drawing, any drawing, the date of the revision needs to be shown. Because there's no way of telling what I have in front of me now, what's different than what was submitted uh previously. Okay?
I agree with you.
And again, that was raised last last time, so I'm a little concerned for the uh fact that some of this stuff has had not been incorporated. End of my comments. Mr. Yacho, I see your hand raised.
Yes, um. I do want to get back to uh the noise and the and the masonry wall. Um. First of all, I want to ask, are any of these existing trees that are showing on drawing? Are the trunks of those trees on the residential property as it seems to show in the? Drawings we've had?
Yeah, so the trees, the trees are right on on the property lines. We wouldn't, we wouldn't take those out regardless of whether the wall was was put in or not.
Um, I what I'm concerned with is that down the road, somebody else may take those out, and then we'd lose whatever sound protection those provided. Um, also, uh, on the uh, on that southeast side or east side, uh, you have six evergreen trees going in, I believe, maybe seven. And uh, and then you have twenty-three uh sumac, sumac shrubs going in. Uh, and those are called low-grow sumac, and they are maximum height is two to three feet. I don't see how those are gonna provide much of a sound barrier for the residential neighborhoods. I would propose that instead of that plan, that you and everybody will gas when I say this, but build a masonry wall.
All right, thanks for your comments. I think what I wanna do is go through our planning consultant, get their comments, and then we'll go back, have some additional discussions, some good points there, Mike. I don't know, Joe?
Yeah, I'll let Matt go ahead and and go through the letter.
Yes, thank you. Um, so a lot of this has, um, obviously, you guys are aware of the site. I'll give a brief overview of it, and there was a few items that were not touched on that I just wanna bring to the planning commission's attention. Um, so the site is a one point two.
Can you share your screen?
I can. I I just have my, um, does everyone have the letter dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one?
It would be just be good to kinda walk it through, I think, would be.
Let's see.
Because the public does not, may not have that.
Yeah, let's share that.
Thank you.
I'll see that.
Yes.
Great. So it's a one, um, it's comprised of two parcels, a one-point-two-four acre site on South Saginaw Street. Um, the applicant is proposing automobile and maintenance service establishment, um, which is a special land use in the general commercial district. Um, that's what Joe went over at the beginning of the meeting, and it it does have additional standards that are related to that use when it's adjacent to residential. Um, I'm gonna um talk about that on page three of this letter, but um it that is noted on page one here. So the proposed building um would meet all um setbacks if there were not a special land use, that's what table two is showing here. Um, however, there's some additional setbacks on page three that I I'm going to discuss. So moving on to page two, we we noted that the circulation needed to be corrected. We did receive those sheets. Um, so the sure of comment related to site configuration and access on under three A has been addressed. Three B mentions the driveway spacing. Um, yeah, this is where um the driveway is actually required to be three-hundred-and-twenty-five feet from Case Avenue. Um, that is not the case. They do not have enough frontage for that, so um they are requesting a waiver. Their driveway is a hundred-and-fifty feet. Um, just for reference, and the the requirement is three-twenty-five. Moving on to four, exterior lighting, um, there was a comment related to um their lighting needed to be adjusted to meet the township ordinance that has been addressed. Uh, we did receive corrected elevation sheets um that where the labels were corrected and are now accurate. Yeah, the applicant, because this site is located partially in the township and partially in the city, um, the planning commission and the site plan review committee did request the application to the city um for the site plan review there as well. That has been received. Um, we've been notified that the um the city is awaiting for the township to approve it before they move forward. Um, so moving on, um, special land use standards, these are general review standards for all special land uses. So I'm gonna read over these um so that the for the benefit of the public and anyone who has not dealt with a special land use is aware, this is again, um, there's two sets. These are for just general standards, and then I'll move into the specific ones. Um, so prior to approving a special land use application, the planning commission shall require the following general standards to be satisfied at the proposed location. Um, the special land use shall be consistent with the goals, objectives, and future land use map described in the master plan. The special land use will be consistent with the stated intent of the zoning district. The special land use will be designated, constructed, operated, and maintained to be compatible with and not significantly alter the existing or intended character of the general vicinity in consideration of environmental impacts, views, aesthetics, noise, vibration, glare, air quality, drainage, traffic, property values, or similar impacts. And number four, special land use can be served adequately by public facilities and services such as sufficient roadway capacity, police and fire protection, drainage structures, water and sewage facilities, and refuse disposal. So those are the general standards that all special land uses um must must meet and that the planning commission should consider. Um, the one standard you, um, moving on to the specific standards for automobile maintenance and service establishments and automobile repair malls, the following specific standards apply. Um, this was the one that um was not, I didn't hear mentioned earlier. This proposal will require a ZBA variance. Um, the building's east facade is approximately seventy-three from the abutting R three residential district. Um, all principal and accessory structures um are required to be set back a minimum of five-hundred feet from any single-family residential district. Um, so the applicant will be requesting or will be required to obtain a four-hundred-and-twenty-seven-foot setback variance for this site in order for this to um to be able to move forward as well. Um, some of the other standards that are are um inclusive automobile maintenance and service establishments um include, uh, there shall be a minimum lot frontage on paved roads of two-hundred feet. Um, this standard is met, there's two-hundred-and-forty feet on Saginaw Street and two-hundred-and-twenty-five on K Street. Um, the applicant has already discussed a few. Number two, regarding overhead doors not facing public streets or residential districts. Um, you may modify this requirement upon a determination that there is no reasonable alternative and that the poor visual impact will be distinguished through the use of landscaping beyond that required in section five-point-one-zero. So that um is is something that you do have a little um can ask the applicant to increase, and it sounds like there's been discussion on that already. So I will just note that and continue on. All access drives um should meet the standards of section five-point-one, um, so they they do meet this standard. Um, when adjoining a residential district, a wall six feet in height shall be erected along any common lot line. Such fence or wall shall be continuously maintained in good condition. The planning commission may approve a landscaped b- berm as an alternative. That is what they have proposed. Um, they've proposed the three layers of landscaping. It doesn't necessarily um have the berm that meets the the township standards as well. So um that that is um should be discussed um and agreed upon and uh so that what we'll leave that one, that's noted at the end of the letter as well. All repair work shall be um conducted completely within an enclosed building. So there was some discussion about potentially the garage doors being left open. We just, well, you know, we'll make sure that that's noted that those noise standards should reflect with the door um doors being closed, and the door should remain closed during operation. Um, so number six does not apply, or um, actually, I'll just read it, unless located in I one or I two, there shall be no outdoor storage or display of vehicle components or parts, materials, commodities for sale, supplies or equipment. Um, so they are not proposing any outdoor storage or or sales. Um, they've indicated they will not be storing any wrecked or partially diminished um dismantled vehicles, uh, given that they only do tire changes. Um, they've just, they have addressed number eight, indicating that they do not um have any hazardous materials on site, so um, you'll wanna waive this condition if if you're not requiring this. And they've indicated that they do not have gasoline sales um on site. So the end of this letter just gives an overview of some of the revisions that were required. Again, we did receive those earlier. Um, we got those over on Monday afternoon, and we didn't wanna send too many letters back and forth, so we just thought we would address the the revisions tonight. So these plan revisions um have been made. And so we're really just looking at the planning commission waivers that are listed here under these four bullet points. And then this um ZBA variance, and I would like to point out, I did my math a little wrong here. This should say four-hundred-and-twenty-seven feet and not four-hundred-and-seventeen feet. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
Mrs. Vince, have a question?
Yes.
In uh item number eight, when it talks about hazardous storage, the last line is the applicant should be prepared to address how hazardous substances are disposed, and that's on a daily basis since they don't have any storage. So Ryan, when you get back on, would you please explain that one? Thank you.
Matt, I would also like to address that similar uh section. Um, are any vehicles gonna be stored overnight or indoors over the weekend?
And I have a question as well that occurred to me during that presentation. I don't know if you're taking note of these to answer them all at one time, that's fine with me. Earlier on, they discussed the noise level and the noise study that was done at the Arizona shop as well as the proposed noise that's at this location right now. I've worked in the vehicle automotive dealership service industry for years, and I can tell you, no dealership, service station, or tire shop anywhere around here keeps their doors closed during business operation June, July, and August in Michigan. So if those noise noise studies were done with the anticipation that bay doors would be closed, those studies are gonna be inaccurate because the companies either gonna pay to install air conditioning, which the applicant's already stated they won't have, or they're gonna send it increased healthcare issues or health issues with their employees, because it's gonna be up up and inside there. My only comment.
Dan, I think you're, are you, I don't know if you're talking, I think you're still muted.
Sorry about that.
No worries. I saw your lips move, and I thought I'd let you know.
Ah, if I can only remember what I said. No, I had my question was just, do any of the planning commission members have any comments, there are questions for you at this point before uh we move on, because what I wanna do is, if you have any questions, while you review letters, fresh in their minds, and then I think we'll go to the public, get any comments from them, then we'll come back to explain. And into some of these more specifics for the applicant. So any other questions for our consultant at this point? Okay, so what I'd like to do is open up the public comment portion. I guess, Mr. Beller, you're gonna control that and get comments from anyone that we may have on or open up.
Yes, we we've got a, I think, four uh call-in, or two call-in users and uh and a two that are on there. Um, I'll uh start with the call-in users. Um, can you hear us?
Yes.
Do you have any comments?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is, my name is Kenneth Wright. I and my wife, Virginia. We live at sixty-two fifty-four Case Avenue, right adjacent to this property. If anybody's taken a look at our site, we have taken pride in keeping it up. And uh, we've been there fifty-two years. We decided to retire there, and so we put some money into the place to keep it looking nice. And now we understand that they want to put this discount tire store adjacent to us. We don't wanna have to listen to air ham, air um wrenches during the day. Uh, and we don't want to have to listen to the compressors running and um and trucks coming in and out, whatever. But the other things that I'm concerned about is what's there now and what has always been there in the past has not had a very good buffer, and we get all the trash of people coming in and out who eat fast food things, and they throw the containers out on the street. And if you check with your code enforcement, you will find that our neighborhood has called to complain about that several times. And so this would even be of more concern to us. And uh, but principally, it's the noise, and I don't feel it's a proper use for that location. Grand Blank Township and the city has plenty of locations where that could go right close by over off from Dorit Highway or somewhere like that uh where they probably don't even need to ask for a zoning board of appeals. So, uh, did you have anything, hon? And my wife has a few comments.
Yes, uh, my name is Virginia Wright, and I'm sorry, but I really do not believe that a business of that sort should be in the general uh commercial uh district. You have offices that oh on the other side on Case Avenue, you have the restaurant, you have some more offices. They're a like a nine-to-five business. They're they're quiet. They don't have any um comms and goings. And I don't believe, 'cause I like to be outside, 'cause I'm retired too, and I like to um work in my yard. And I know for a fact that bushes and trees do not um, are not a sound barrier. And I also think that um something like this, the more cars coming and going, that you need a red light at the end of Case Avenue and Saginaw Street. It's very difficult, you know, the traffic is very heavy on Saginaw Street. Five lanes of traffic coming and going, coming and going. You ta- sometimes you try to go out and get out of Case Avenue and go towards Grand Blank City. You have to wait a very long time. Now, if you got cars coming and going, and you know, it's just, um, well, that's enough of that. But uh, I just don't think that it's a um a proper place for it. And um, and another thing, just a moment, please. This is what I will hear. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna hear. And would you want to use something like that six days a week in your backyard? And that's all I gotta say. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Beller, is there someone else?
Brent Axe.
All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Brent Axe. I live on the first house on Frederickson, Frederick Street. I'm right behind Auto Zone. I get an awful lot of trash coming through the Volkswagen dealership because they have a drive-through uh system, and they leave both doors open, and all their loose trash comes blowing over into my yard. Number two, there's awful lot of noise because I live right behind Auto Zone. It's an also an auto place. I have an awful lot of people turning around in my driveway because they do not know where to go. And I do not like that that either. The headlights of them pulling in will probably be facing back toward our subdivision. The headlights of them pulling in will probably be facing back toward our subdivision. And we don't like lights shining up in our backyard. Um, I agree with Mrs. Wright that the traffic going in and out of Case Avenue onto Saginaw Street. Is very dangerous because that's just about right at the top of a hill. So if somebody tries to make a left turn out to go into Grand Blank, they're liable to get nailed from somebody heading south. And also going north, it's awfully hard for them to get out. And all that extra traffic, I know what it's like at Frederick Street. And it can take me several minutes to get in and out. Um, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Banderski, do you have something you want to say for? Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would ask Mr. Ash to please give us his address. I know he said first house on Frederick Street, but what is the address, please?
Thirty-two ninety-two Frederick Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Beller, we have anyone else from the public? That, Mr. Onglen, do you have anything you want to bring up? Okay, thank you. Mary Kay?
Nope, nothing to say, thanks.
All right, thank you. So at this time then, we will close the public comment portion, we'll bring it back to the planning commission. There are a couple of things, I guess I'd like to get clarified maybe by our planner before we get into a lot of detail. There was a comment made regarding zoning of the property. So did I understand correctly, um, that this use of a tire store is permitted by right in a general commercial district? But special land use would be something we need to look at from any particular, um, conditions that might need to be applied one way or the other. Maybe we kind of hit that first.
Yeah. Jeff, excuse me, my ordinance closed on me accidentally here. So because this is a special land use, there are specific conditions, and I think Matt outlined those in the letter.
Yes, those are page three of the letter.
You want to highlight those again, Matt?
Yep. And it's, it's section four point one six of the ordinance. So it's this, uh, these section right here.
Okay, so we need the road fronted.
So the, the first one to look at, it's a little tricky because it's not numbered, but the first standard is that it needs a five hundred foot setback from a residential district.
Understood.
Yep, and then these.
But if a tire store is to be located in the township, general commercial is the most appropriate zoning district? I guess this is kind of what my question is from an overall standpoint.
Oh, um, yeah, it would be, as permitted in the, I'm just checking to see if there's another.
Yeah, we.
It's permitted in another district, so I was going to look at the use figures really quick.
Yeah.
Automotive maintenance.
So.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Special land use in the general commercial district. And, um, and also, excuse me, also in the neighborhood commercial district.
All right, I also, I guess, wanted to bring up, maybe there was a comment about the, the traffic light. Unfortunately, Grand Blank Township has very little control over roads. And there are certain standards required in order to meet a traffic light, so if we wanted a traffic light there, we couldn't install one. Unless there were certain conditions that were met, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and actually, that would require the county to approve and install that to township. Yes. All right, I guess, uh, maybe we'll move on to the rest of the planning commission for any comments, questions. You know, I, I know there is, uh, maybe this is a question for the app, but right now, there is a berm across the rear of the property. I'm not sure whether that is on the discount tire proposed site, or whether that's on the neighboring site. I thought it was on the general commercial property. Ryan, can you confirm that?
Yeah, it's on the discount tire property. Um, the one thing about our proposed design is we had to raise the building up, um, a little bit higher at that location. And subsequently, um, that berm would be quite as high, um, once we've done our improvements. But we could certainly, you know, construct a higher berm than what is there currently, but it is on what would be the discount tire property.
Well, I guess what I was getting at, what were the plans for the existing berm? Was it that it's going to stay in place?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I guess one other comment that I will make is in regard to a, a wall. Went in this time of year, winter times, early spring. The existing trees really don't provide any screening to get the branches all start up. I don't know, six feet in the air, let's say, and, uh, um, no leaves on the tree. So I would personally be in favor of some sort of wall or fence. I'd actually like to see landscaping and either a, you know, wall or fence to provide year-round screening as well. Um, I guess I'd like to go to other planning commission members and get any comments there.
Uh, this is Dolores, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm tend to favor, um, a wall rather than just relying solely on the landscaping. For the screening, um, for the reasons that you mentioned, and I know Mike had some similar concerns. Um, I think we have to keep in mind that if this project is approved, it will be, you know, um, in spite of the, you know, it will be because they got a zoning, uh, uh, variance. Um, to reduce the, uh, um, you know, the distance from residential area from like five hundred feet to seventy-three feet. Um, and, uh, also, we'd be giving them, um, the right to have the overhead doors facing a, um, a residential district. Both of those provisions in the zoning ordinance kind of, you know, indicate that there's, there's always a concern when this type of a use, um, about, say, a residential area. So I think, you know, we really should look at, if the project is approved, you know, more screening than, than simply the landscaping. So I would, I would favor a masonry wall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mute myself.
Can I, can I just clarify one thing that, that she said?
Absolutely.
The overhead door is not going to be facing a residential district. The overhead doors, there's one that would be facing north and one that would be facing south. So one to the, uh, commercial business to the north, and then one to the south that would be facing Case Avenue.
And I guess for further clarification, I go to our planning consultant, my understanding that it wasn't the face of public street, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. It's not to face a public street or a residential district, right?
Yeah, I, I do believe the discount tire has made the situation, um, much better than, uh, what would be in their standard. And I don't believe the doors themselves are visible from the residential properties because of the design of the building. The portion that faces the residence, it's longer, the doors are then set back in some distance. I don't believe you'll even see the doors from the residential area, it would still be visible from, uh, Case Avenue.
Based on the plan I'm looking at, so because this was one of the areas, it's going to be truck dock that I was looking at. The, the overhead doors for the truck dock does face the residential area, as well as the dumpsters are tucked back in that, uh, far northwest corner of the parking lot, but very, very close to residential area.
I guess, Ryan, you talked about, I don't believe you have a truck dock, you've got a grade level door, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's, that's a receiving area door, so that would be one that, you know, would only be open at, at truck deliveries and things of that nature, which as Bill said, would be a once a week type of thing.
Any other questions, comments from planning commission members?
When the trucks deliver the tires, do you guys use a forklift, or how are they unloaded out of the truck?
Uh, good question there, literally the truck backs up, opens his door, and we have two employees that will, basically, the, the truck driver will roll them off of the truck. And they will receive them into the building, and we have scanning systems that scan the tires in now. So none of the tires stay outside at all during that timeframe. They all come into the building and the doors get closed behind them.
Well, obviously, from a planning commission standpoint, this strategy is permitted, there's a couple of concerns. Want to do as much as we can to improve the situation beyond what's there now. You know, you've heard about a wall, you've talked about a wall. Um, I think we put a wall along the residential property that would significantly reduce any trash from off the site. Makes sense, Ryan?
Yep.
I still think it would be good to have some, um, landscaping. I would say, my, my, uh, comment would be landscaping maybe in front of the wall, or to the discount tire. Maybe that's something we'd like to see. I don't, any other comments regarding that, other planning commission members?
This is Mike. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I agree with, uh, several of the other members that think that we might need a masonry wall. That is also given some attractive landscaping. I believe that the trees, the deciduous trees that are there existing are box elders. I don't know if they've been identified by the property owner, but, um, those are short-lived and messy trees. Um, but I don't think depending on those trees is in our best interest. And also, as was pointed out, trees are not an effective noise barrier. My office is, uh, six hundred feet from I-75. And that area is covered with evergreen trees thirty or more feet tall. And I can hear I-75 every minute of every day.
You'd be, you'd be favorable to landscaping.
A wall with some landscaping to, uh, decorate it, yes.
Yeah.
Ryan, this is Jay Johnson. When you, you mentioned that the berm was going to be going away, uh, because you guys were going to make improvements to the lot to raise it. How high are you guys planning on going up? And then how does that? I'd like to kind of see how that works with what the existing property is, and how much higher the wall is going to have to be, or lower, I guess it would have to be. Do you kind of see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, so the, um, there would still be like a foot of berm left from what's there currently to where our top of curb would be at that location. I think, um, the landscapers, uh, designers thought was that we'd have these low massing of shrubs that essentially would, would reach the elevation to where it's gonna, um, you know, deflect or mitigate any headlights that might, um, go into that location. Um, and then you had the evergreen trees as well. Um, so I don't think he was technically planning on raising that, that berm at that time, only because of the, the other measures that we were incorporating with it as well.
So if your site is being, I'm sorry, just to follow up, so the site is being raised on discount tire, um, the wall, if you put in a six-foot wall, basically, um, going to be that, by reading this right, that we would be five feet approximately above the top of that existing berm?
Correct.
Okay, so that would provide a better buffer than what's there now. Uh, that wall would run crossed. That continues along the rear, the rear, I guess east that is, of the property line out to, I think it, I guess I go to our site and consult. How far can that run, does that have to stop at the edge of the property line then, I presume, it can't actually run out into the right of way?
Uh, the wall?
Yes.
Yeah, I was wondering that too, um, and I was looking sort of at the edge of the property, I think that would be sufficient. I don't think there's a sidewalk there, um, so it could come all the way out to the edge of their property, but not beyond into the right of way. Um, I was also wondering if, um, perhaps a low knee wall along Case Avenue might also help with screening a little bit and maybe buffering a little bit more noise. It's low, but, um, maybe that would be an additional, um, measure that we could consider.
When you say you're thinking of something that would block headlights?
Right, so like the thirty-six to forty-two inch high, not something tall, that would be, I, I don't think that would be helpful. But, I mean, it would buffer noise, but it wouldn't be attractive to have a six-foot wall all the way around the whole site. Um, but something low might help with a little bit of the noise mitigation and some of the screening of the vehicles that are parked there.
If I may speak, I guess, uh, my concerns with the sound are minimal, I do believe the sound will increase from what's there now, definitely from the business there now, because you have office space there right now. Sound will increase, but my other major concern is, I think one of the public comments made is to, I don't know what the traffic counts are right now for those two businesses that are in there, but I imagine it's quite minimal. It's definitely well below the seventy-five to a hundred vehicles per day that the requested facility would receive or anticipate. That's going to be an awful lot of traffic increase for that corner there, especially for the Cass Avenue, because I know that the cars are going to pull in and out, um, probably through that route, because that's going to be easier to access, seventy, or excuse me, Saginaw Street and the way out to that driveway. I would be willing to bet money that even with that increase of seventy-five to a hundred cars a day, the county still would not put a traffic light in there. And I, I agree that it's, the zoning is probably appropriate type of business, but for a special land use, I don't know that I can, uh, agree with this. Just, I think it's the wrong location for that, you got, you're too close to residential for that kind of traffic volume. And, okay, I don't think I can, I can agree with this. Okay, I don't think I can, I can agree with this.
Um, I guess from uh, go back to our planning consultant, there was some traffic information.
Oh, I have to go back into the files to look at that.
Information, but I think what I heard was that uh, it didn't meet the threshold required in order to uh, provide a traffic study?
Correct. Back at some of the other.
I can read that to you if you want me to. Would you like me to do that?
Um, I'm okay with that, unless Jill, you've got it or no?
That's fine, yeah, I'm still trying to track that one down.
Okay, go ahead.
In our file.
Um, okay, so based on um, the amount of car generation for this particular site. Um, item two within section six point six indicates the following studies may be required, uh, rezoning traffic study. Um, which this requirement's not applicable because it's, it's not a rezoning. Uh, traffic impact assessment, uh, a TIA is required if the proposed uses would generate five hundred to seven hundred and forty-nine driveway trips per day, or fifty to ninety-nine peak hour, peak direction driveway trips. That requirement's not applicable because we're only talking about seventy-five to a hundred daily driveway trips. Um, and then the final one is the traffic impact statement. A TIS is required if the proposed use would generate seven hundred and fifty or more driveway trips per day. Or two, or a one hundred or more peak hour, peak direction driveway trips. That requirement's not applicable because Discount Tire only anticipates seventy-five to one hundred daily driveway trips.
And to follow up, I know that that was something that was identified in your first review letter. Um, and I believe that is something that the Site Plan Review Committee may have discussed during preliminary site plan review. Um, but I didn't see that as being a requirement coming out of that conversation.
It wasn't a requirement from site plan review.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My wife and I drove uh, Case Avenue and Frederick Street and with the specific intention of looking at all the issues that may occur, um, if a Discount Tire was gonna go uh, into that location. Um, the first time, a couple of, probably a week ago, we went right out on Case Avenue and made an immediate left turn and there was nobody there. The next time, we didn't wait for an opening, we just turned right on the uh, side street. And we had no problems whatsoever um, with uh, egress leaving that site. So, and another point is that if I'm not mistaken, the driveway entrance for the Discount Tire is proposed to be on the highest point of Saginaw Street. Where every driver can look downhill towards the traffic that's coming north and south. I don't think that that merits a uh, traffic light.
Well, I think the traffic light's outside of our control anyway, but I guess it also depends on what time of day you're there, obviously, because that, that can vary. Um, I visited the site myself as well and uh, around, I think it was a little after five o'clock one day, and I had to wait a little while, it wasn't very long, I had to wait a little while. Didn't turn right um, on Case Avenue, so I think it probably depends on the time of day.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Colton?
Yes, um, I wanted to address item eight in the specific, in the special land use um, items about the um, pollution incident protection plan. The um, I mean, the applicant has indicated that they are not going to store any hazardous substances on site, so uh, you know, essentially, don't need to uh, comply with that, with the requirement of a pollution incident protection plan. Um, my suggestion would be that um, if we do decide to approve approve the special land use, could we put a condition on that, that the uh, you know, there would be no hazardous substances stored on site? Just to kind of reinforce that um, requirement. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jack?
So on Tuesday, I had the pleasure of speaking with about five of the residents. Um, I actually just went door to door and uh, kind of asked and feel out what the residents actually felt um, was needed there and what wasn't needed and so on and so forth. And I will say the one thing that all of them kind of reiterated to me was the traffic and the concern of the increase in traffic pulling out on the Saginaw Street. That the uh, you know, the increasing car uh, with the Discount Tire was going to cause, so. I just, I don't, I don't, I'm concerned, I have, I have concerns about that. Um, and I, I'm kind of leaning towards uh, what, what Larry had mentioned too. I, I, I'm just not there, I, I'm not finding or seeing that this is going to be the best use of this particular piece of property.
Ryan, is, can you maybe talk a little bit about the traffic patterns and when you would anticipate if someone leaving here, would they be going out on the Case Avenue? I believe trucks would be if they're leaving that track.
Well, I think in general, that's why we were um, proponents of having the additional driveway. Um, the right in, right out to Saginaw. Um, because it, it keeps people off Saginaw, it makes an easy in and an easy out. Um, if we're, if we're focusing um, or directing all the traffic to just one driveway that's accessed off Case Avenue, I guess I could potentially see where that may be problematic, but if you're, if you're entering and exiting um, directly into the store, I don't even know how that would be noticeable to um, the residents in that area. And then I guess just one other thing, I mean, this thing is zoned so that a resident, a restaurant could be there, which would generate significantly more than any Discount Tire would ever generate on a daily basis.
Is there considered in the, maybe some directional signage on uh, the property that would direct people that are leaving the facility, that, I guess, is that the intent, that they would go back out on the Saginaw Street direct? Any additional traffic off of Case Avenue?
Yeah, so the only reason somebody would probably go back out on Case Avenue for egress would be if they wanted to make a left-hand turn um, onto Saginaw. But otherwise, we find that, you know, if, if a, if a car is traveling northbound um, on Saginaw, they're going to see the, the sign for Discount Tire, their inclination is to pull into the site after that sign. Um, so that's kind of the, the reason, another reason why we, we would like that right in drive and then obviously, it's a, it's a simple right-hand turn um, with that right out as well. But we have done, um, I don't know, Bill, you can speak to this, but we have done um, internal um, signage or, or routing that puts arrows on the ground, directing people how to maneuver through the site.
Yes, and we, we would be willing to uh, add anything of that nature if uh, we were to be uh, conditioned or stipulated to do so, we'd be happy to. We, we want to be a benefit to the community, we don't want to, we're not coming in to make a bunch of noise and drain the community uh, of all their joy and enjoyment of their neighborhood. Uh, we definitely want to be an added benefit, not a drain.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Nacho?
Have we resolved the issue of the uh, trucks driving over the curb at the entrance on Saginaw Street, it would be H two, three A?
It's my understanding that a revised plan has been submitted, um, is, I guess I'll ask our planning consultant.
I just don't see it on a plan, so.
No, I, I think there was something that was recently submitted to uh, that's my understanding to the consultant, the planning commission hasn't seen, is that?
That's correct. Yeah.
Yep, I can actually share that. So here is the um, updated uh, truck circulation pattern. Everyone can see the screen there?
Yes.
Yep, so this is, this is what was um, resubmitted, um, like I said to us earlier this week. Um, we did, uh, we noticed that this was corrected, um, I, I would note though that, you know, I um, I believe that the loading door was located over in this area, so I would um, might seek a little clarification on how the truck went back into that spot. I believe it was mentioned that the truck backs into the building, so I, I
I don't, I don't think that's the case, I think it pulls up parallel, I guess.
That is correct, it would pull up parallel right here and unload.
Yeah, so that, that might be worth clarifying on this plan then, where the actual unloading is taking place in relation to the door.
Clarification to the special land use for a shop, so many becoming of restaurants. I was off the township board for four years, so forgive me, I'm a little bit rusty on this clause. Restaurants, I don't think require a special land use, I may be wrong on that, but they do if such restaurant has, for example, a drive-through. Can somebody refresh my memory on what that ordinance is for our township, Mr. Ladd, I don't know if you're still on the call or not?
Um, bars, taverns with live entertainment or dancing, restaurants with drive-in or drive-through service are special land uses.
Okay, so restaurants are in that category as well.
Regular restaurants without drive-throughs are permitted. Correct.
Okay, and with the size of that lot, it would be a pretty, it'd be unlikely to be the restaurant without a drive-through.
We looked at the last, the last part of what you said, Mr. Anderson.
Um, I said, based on the footprint of that lot, a restaurant without a drive-through would, could be built, but not likely, in my opinion.
Unless it was a small, mostly drive-through business.
Right, which would also require.
Right. I think some, it might be challenging with your cuing um, standards for the number of um, spaces between the drive-through order window and the pickup window, and then how many spaces are required to be um, set aside for stacking. I think it may be challenging to do that on that site.
Okay, so that, that may involve that type of application on this lot as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Nacho?
Uh, monopolize the conversation, um, do we have responses from the road commission? The drain commission and the city of Grand Blank?
I will let the applicant respond to that, I guess that's where he's at in that process.
I think that's the key, I mean, we can't move forward without some kind of an agreement, I don't believe.
Well, you could make a conditional approval upon, you know, can, I think the middle mate, I'm not sure. Ryan, still on?
Yeah, so we did um, submit to the city of, of Grand Blank in October, at the same time we submitted to the township. Uh, they just wanted to have us get through Township Planning Commission before um, the city with us on the agenda. Um, the road commission, we did have several correspondence with uh, Corey Jarboe at the uh, road commission who said that um, he didn't have any issues with the proposed driveway at that location, that was um, a telephone conversation. Um, we did just, because we have to submit um, a permit application and fee um, for the actual driveway, which normally we wouldn't do that until we're ready to, and know we're going to construct this thing, but we submitted it anyway just last week, just to see if we could get something more formal to pass along to you, which we will do that um, when the time comes. The drain commissioner's office, um, again, same thing, I mean, we don't even know if, if this, how this site is laid out is going to be what you know, the planning commission, if they wanted to change the location of, of islands or the parking layouts or things like that, that all changes the um, the drainage design and, um, so typically, we wouldn't go through that element um, without having a site plan that we're firm on, to go through the, the time and effort and money to, to develop all the drainage calculations that go along with that. Um, that being said, this site has zero right now for stormwater management, there's nothing on the site um, for stormwater, it all drains out to Case Avenue into the city system. Um, so, anything we do is going to be a significant improvement. Um, but we do, based on our knowledge of the drain commissioner's standards, believe we can meet every criterion.
Did I answer your question, Mr. Nacho?
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Banderski?
Yeah, three quick items, first off, the uh, drawing that shows the truck entrance in the revision is dated three, two, twenty, just a matter of point. Secondly, Ryan, I had asked earlier this evening, uh, since you don't store hazardous materials, what's the plan to dispose of hazardous materials at the end of the day? And thirdly, on a some, uh, concrete wall, is there, are there any setback requirements that will move that in further? Thank you.
Well, we will update all the drawings um, to reflect, obviously, the, the last revision of record um, on all of those. Regarding uh, the hazardous substances, again, there's, there's no hazardous substances being generated at this site to dispose of. Um, the only potential thing that, that could happen is any potential leakage um, from a vehicle. Uh, I think we responded to um, in our response letter to Gifford Webster, that if they would like us to prepare a, a PIP plan to, for that particular instance, then we would certainly um, be able to do that. Uh, regarding the, the masonry wall, I think, I think we would want to move it off the property line in this particular case because of all those mature trees are right at the property line. So we would want, we wouldn't want to do anything to get into that root mass and potentially kill those trees. Um, you know, Jill may know better from a zoning perspective, if that can be off the property line or not, but I think that would be the preference.
As long as it's on your property and not on the adjacent property, yes. It is required to be at, there's no setback required, it is required to be at the common lot line.
So I'm assuming we would want some space from parking uh, spaces to allow for some landscaping and the wall there and away from the trees on the other.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, a couple of comments. First of all, to the applicant, I'm generally very pro-business, I know business is good for the townships, businesses, if you have the right mixture of businesses will actually bring more residents into the township, and that's what we want, we want a good business to, residential ratio, one of some of the businesses here are going to attract people to our community, so I'm very pro-business. Just, it's also my job to make sure that the businesses that we do put in here are located in the right area and the fit works with the zoning and so forth for that area. Um, concrete walls. Um, concrete walls, I know a little bit about them, and there's something we need to think about here. There's a couple of different designs of concrete walls. Some designed to block the noise from the other side. The sound will basically hit that concrete wall and bounce back the other direction. Some are designed to absorb the noise. So see concrete walls with different shapes or maybe staggered patterns. Those are designed to absorb the noise more instead of bouncing it back. We have across the street, if you're looking at the map there from store, I guess we kind of do south, maybe southwest across the street there. Our house is off Cass Avenue, then in that direction as well, it would be on that side of the street, as well as the medical office of there right now. If we put in just a standard concrete wall, I'm no engineer, but I suspect it may bounce a lot more noise back direction. Um, not really eliminating the noise, just moving the direction it goes to if you don't install the right type of wall there. But that would be another concern I'd have about that.
And if I can, just to kind of add on with that, I think that some of the landscaping in the front side of that wall would also help to um prevent that from bouncing back potentially in addition to having the right material.
I've got a question for our planning consultants. I know that there was a, a list of items generated from our last site plan review. Are there any items remaining from that that um still need to be addressed?
Um, you have the lighting plan, which has been submitted, um correcting the building orientation. I, I'm not sure that that was corrected on the site plan, was it?
On the one that was submitted this, on Monday.
Was, okay, good.
Yeah, that, yep.
Um, the drive island, the trucks, we, that's been resolved, um, the um requirements of the, the distance spacing um from the zoning board of appeals as well as, although it's not mentioned in the letter, um, the distance um to the residential. Um, and then the review comments from the road commission, the drain commission, and um application for the city. Believe all of those have been resolved.
With the exception of the few that still need to take place, that you mentioned the approvals from the.
Absolutely.
Um, township approvals would also be on that list. Just trying to create a list here of items that I want to make sure we address.
Yeah, you usually do add that in. Um, I don't see that, the other township uh departments, but that is one to remember to add as well.
So from a variance standpoint, um they would need a variance from the zoning board of appeals or the proximity to uh the residential area. Is there actually a, a variance required for the driveway spacing, or is that something that the planning commission addresses as part of the special land use?
That is part of the planning commission's um ability to waive.
Any other comments from planning commission members?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, real quick, just a quick question for Ryan. So when I, when I'm looking at, is he there, Ryan?
Yep.
Oh, um, so when I'm looking at the um, let's see, I guess it'd be page uh three of the site plan. Uh, there's arrows that are showing the direction to travel. When a vehicle comes into discount tire, when it goes in for an air check or tire service, does it enter from the north or the south side of the building?
Bill, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, it'll enter the same way as the service will, so it'll enter from the north. Wow, so that, that drive aisle width is two lanes. One that would be on the left side to go towards the service for our, our employees to be able to circulate customer cars. And then on the outside lane, it would be an internal lane for air checks. So customers would not be sitting outside due to the weather. They would be getting air checks inside the building. And it was just a straight left, straight exit lane.
Okay, so when the vehicle pulls out of your air tracker service bay, is there enough room for them to use the entrance on Saginaw Street to make a right? For them to make that corner or that turn, or would it kind of funnel them out onto Case Avenue?
No, they can, they can make that turn. There's plenty of room there for a car because the, there's a lot of room there for the truck as well, which is the WB sixty-seven as far as coming in and out. So a car would be able to make that turn and get out on Saginaw to head north.
Okay. Another concern I have, and I too drove by the property today, just to kind of look at it, where that's located. If you pull out, you've got the right in, right out. Um, I did come from the south on Saginaw, turn right onto Case Avenue, easy to do, look at the property. When you pull out and turn right, the next crossroad you have to get back to the side of town is Hill Road, or if you're going into the city, got to go down quite a ways to, to turn around legally. I still think a lot of the traffic is going to go out on the Case Avenue, turn left out of that avenue to head back into the city of Grand Blanc. The whole, the right in, right out thing is going to alleviate a percentage of that, but I, I think a lot of people are actually impatient enough to take a right turn out of there and then go down and turn around either at the car dealerships or Heritage Park Plaza, there with your stoplights, I think you're going to turn.
I think you're going to get a certain percentage of the people that maybe try the exits, they want to go left from the property and try to exit out into Saginaw Street, and they'll probably do it. Um, just don't know whether it's safe because they're, they're really kind of directed to head right.
I, I agree, it's probably not safe and not the, at least at certain times of day, not the wisest choice to do, but no traffic will do it. Uh, there's an intersection in the city of Grand Blanc, and all right now it was right turn only, and had all the arrows, two lanes going right um onto Holly Road. And so many cars disobeyed that, that the city actually took that out, and now there's a left turn and a right turn lane. It was supposed to be a right turn only um design. And, and that, I'll add, that, that is a different scenario because that is from one street under another, not from business on two streets.
Um, I get, does the applicant have any comment regarding a knee wall on Case Avenue? I don't know that you had an opportunity to respond to that.
Well, I think discount tire is positioned, um, I've worked with them for a long time, is that um, you know, if that's something that um, you know, the planning commission members feel is, is a benefit to um, to the site to potentially um solve some light nuisance or, or even um noise, that they're usually want to be a good neighbor and provide those things.
All right. I guess maybe a question for planning consultants regarding this uh pit. Um, is that something you?
Um, yeah, I don't think it would hurt, and if the applicant's willing to do it, I think that might uh reassure folks that um that that'll be taken care of. I know um Ms. Coulter had suggested having that um statement um be included in the, in a motion if there is one. Um, and, but again, um, if Mr. McEnhill is ready to do that, then that might be just a good requirement to add in.
Okay, I just, like I said, I'm trying to collect some things here um that we've discussed. Uh, one is the six-foot wall and landscaping, it's near the property, uh, we'd like to see. You're still going to need the variance for uh drive distance separation. A drive distance we would address at the planning commission, the distance uh to residential property is still required from the zoning board of appeals. Um, where do the door spacing public street fit into this? Is that part of the special land use as well then?
That's correct. That's a special land use standard, and um you have, again, there's some authority to, to request some additional screening if you don't feel it's screened properly um with that landscaping.
But it is something that the planning commission is able to modify.
Yes.
Where would you fund the additional screening? Or, or like I said, I think the way the building's designed where the front part is shorter helps from the resident, um, it's more likely uh maybe the first couple of houses that are across the street might have a glimpse of that door potentially, I'm not even.
Yeah, I think there was a comment about um on the renderings that it didn't look like it was, and um some of the shrubs were only going to grow to two to three feet, so.
But we're talking overhead doors, I'm guessing ten feet tall. Um, but the building itself, I think, is going to do the majority of screening here from the residential area. It doesn't um take care of anything from Case Avenue or out towards Saginaw. I don't know that anything could be done regarding that. Unless somebody's got brilliant ideas. Um, we talked about an unloading zone should be identified on the plan. I don't remember, Ryan, if that is shown on there.
What was that?
Is the unloading zone identified on the plans?
Yeah, it is. We show it um up in the northeast corner adjacent to the um dumpster enclosure.
You show that, I don't know, you show that plan, just to address that item. Bring it up, someone bring that plan up, I guess.
Yeah, so it's shown, looks like it's shown right here.
Is that in reality what, how that would work, or would that be?
That's what it's, it's labeled loading. So it, it doesn't, again, that's what I, I kind of mentioned, it doesn't really appear that the um loading zone actually matches the circulation pattern um as far as using that. So if they're pulling here, then maybe that should be noted, but the loading zone is not, you know, looks like it's just adjacent. So if anyone was parked here, they'd have trouble using the actual loading zone.
And it looks like they do, there's the, if you look at the floor plan, you can see the receiving areas, receiving area there in that back corner that's obviously within the building.
I'm not seeing it.
Um, there's a small overhead door, if you look at um.
You've got to back up a couple of plans, I think.
Yeah, if you see the one, you can see it on the elevation too. There's a small o- um overhead door in the back.
Yeah, so I think, okay, here we go, receiving area is right here, yeah.
Yeah, and that's that little overhead door. It's a small overhead door.
So as I understand it as well, the sidewalk, uh, there's no curb between the sidewalk and the pavement, is that correct, Ryan?
No, there, it is a six-inch high curb around that, yeah.
I guess, has been your thoughts on uh traffic? It sounds like the ordinance doesn't require um traffic statement or um traffic study at this point.
Right. Um, although I would say that if the planning commission wanted to ask for that, uh, because it is a special land use um and also because the applicant is requesting a waiver of the driveway spacing requirement, um, that may be something that if, that you may request.
Any other comments from planning commission members? I don't know anything that we talked about that you wanted to reinforce, or?
I guess I never did get an answer to my one comment earlier on to the applicant, was the sound study done with the anticipation of the bay doors being closed during business operations? Was that with the doors open?
That was with the doors open because during business hours, as you had also mentioned, uh, not being in air-conditioned space during the summer would be re terribly hot. So those doors do remain open during business hours?
Um, any other comments, suggestions from planning commission regarding door, overhead door location?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Vince. To the last comment, the noise study. That noise study, would that had, would that comprehend the doors open in the summertime?
That, that question was just asked, and the applicant responded that yes, it was based on the doors being that, well, the existing condition that is on. Does that clarify or no? Or are you asking something different?
Well, I guess my question is, uh, with the doors open in the summertime, there will be no added noise beyond what's shown in the uh noise study. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you.
Now, looking through my list here, um obviously the wall and landscaping at residential property, there was some concern about the design of that wall. Um, and I don't know if that's something that the planning commission, if this did get approved, would uh defer the review to the site plan or staff um for review. That's something that I guess consider. We would need the variance for the distance to residential property. Um, talked about a knee wall on Case Avenue. Um, I guess I'd like input, further input from planning commissioners regarding any traffic impact they, they'd like to see, if it's uh something they want to see or not. Um, we talked about uh non-hit, no hazardous substance stored on site and uh filing of the pollution incident prevention plan. Um, obviously the approvals still from road commission, drain commission, township departments. Um, city approval, anything else that they talked about that maybe you can capture here? I guess we have six Planning Commission members present today. So for an approval, it would take. Out of the six to approve this. I guess we can ask the applicant to question. Whether you want us to. Vote today? Or is there anything else you want an opportunity to address prior that you think might improve your? Position? I guess also for the Planning Commission members, is there anything else you want to see before you make a decision of these items that were talked about?
This is Dolores Colter. Could we just maybe take a straw vote on whether we want to ask for a traffic study before we kind of move on to the? General question of approval or disapproval of the special land use. For me, I'm. Not, don't see any real need to do a traffic study, given the fact that they didn't meet the, you know, the requirement in the. Zoning ordinance that would require a traffic study. So I don't know, you know. How beneficial it would be to require them to do a traffic study. I, anyway, it's my opinion.
I guess, I guess. The planning commissioner said address. Has a concern, I guess, maybe we need to get their input as to. They would still want to see. Mr. Anderson, your thoughts? Do you think that makes any difference in your decision one way or the other?
I do not. I don't. I don't think this is going to warrant your traffic study.
Okay. Anyone else who just feels strongly that they would like to see that before making a decision or no? Hearing no response, we'll take that as a no. Anything else the Planning Commission feels, any additional information they feel they need in order to make a decision? All right, Ms. Beam, I'm going to ask for a little bit of a clarification. If this does not receive approval from the Planning Commission. Applicant cannot come back for another year, same. Use as.
I believe that is correct.
That's kind of what I remember from.
Yes, one year from the date of denial, except on the grounds of new evidence or proof of changed conditions relating to all of the reasons noted for denial found to be valid by the Planning Commission.
So how do we handle? An updated site plan that would show. A six foot wall in landscaping at the rear of the property and a long case avenue. That basically. Of approval that would need to be submitted. I don't know if Mr. Laddie wants to chime in on that or. From a procedural standpoint?
Well, it's, you know, it's interesting because you brought up the issue that we don't, we don't have a full planning commission tonight. And my, what I'm wondering is. If there is some need or desire to see an amended site plan that that may include the, some of the conditions that you're considering tonight. Would it be beneficial to the applicant and the planning commission to to table your decision to ask for? Additional information, whether it be a, the comparison of a knee wall versus. A higher wall. And some landscaping elements. I wonder if this isn't an opportunity to kind of. Avoid the, the, the up or down vote that the applicant will have to make because we don't have a full board. And then also if it would provide more information to the, to the planning commission to see. Additional submissions from the applicants.
That's kind of what I was asking, whether there was anything that Planning Commission wanted to see and then whether the. Applicant would like. I guess, would the applicant, well, they would have the applicant. Request us to table as well if they would like to. Although, who knows, I guess next month whether we would have any more left.
I, I think.
You would have more information.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think necessarily. I mean, that's a, that's a courtesy that you could offer them. Because we don't, we may not have a full commission next, next month either. But if it, if it turns out, again, that there's additional. Submissions that might benefit you in your decision, then why not kill two birds with one stone potentially?
Well, that's why I guess I'm asking the planning permission members in order to make a decision. Any of these items we talked about, they want to be beforehand?
Any of, any of our people from the public are on this or not, but I guess one question kind of crossing my mind right now is. If we were to ask the residents on the street behind or the neighboring residential area, would they rather have a natural landscape barrier? If this was to pass, if they're out of that natural landscape barrier? Or if they'd rather look at the backside of a brick wall, there's pros and cons to both. How would the residents behind there? For a handout of the two options?
And I'm, I'm guess, depends upon how the landscaping is done. Is there landscaping placed on both sides of the wall? Well, they're not staring at the wall. That's another, I don't know what the applicant is thinking based on comments we've heard. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we table this. And for a month until our next planning commission meeting. And that we offer the applicant the opportunity to come back with. A concrete wall or solid barrier that has some kind of a. Visual appeal to it and to answer some of these other questions and get some of these other. Blueprints and things clarified and corrected. Okay, any other comments?
I have just one suggestion. If we do decide to table this till the next meeting. That, I mean, I'm assuming this meeting is being recorded. If maybe staff or maybe yourself, Mr. Chairman. Strongly suggests that the members of the Planning Commission that are not present today. Listen, you know. To the. The meeting we had tonight, so they'll have a understanding of why we tabled it and what some of the concerns were.
Well, they're also. They're also will be. Or I guess.
How does the applicant feel about this? I guess I haven't heard. Tonight as planned or leaving with a motion to approve it based on meeting certain criteria or do they want to wait?
Did you just say you're going to approve it with conditions?
We asked whether you wanted us to.
Do you, do you want to take a vote tonight or have the commission, I guess, vote tonight to either approve it or deny it? Because it can go in either one of those directions. But. I don't know if you want us to table it with your, with your thoughts.
Bill, I defer to you.
Yeah. Normally, under normal circumstances, I would say I'd be perfectly fine to table it. We've been in escrow on this property again now for nearly a year and four months. And I think the owner of the property that is trying to sell it to us is way. Losing some patience with it as we've had it tied up trying to get through this process. So. Our preference, of course, would be for an approval with conditions. But we also understand if you don't feel like you have enough information to make that decision. We would be open to tabling it. And I could just try and go back to the owner and ask for more time on our contract for purchase. So. You know, my preference would be to, to find out tonight one way or another, but I also don't want to push you guys into something you're not comfortable with at this point.
I would guess that if someone wants to make a motion for approval, that it should include. Six foot wall with landscaping at the residential property. Must obtain the variance. Or distance setback from residential property for the zoning Board of Appeals. I'm thinking that would probably. We need to either address or not address a knee wall, knee wall on Case Avenue. Pollution infinite protection plan. Part of that was also labeling in a site plan to make sure there were no hazardous substances stored on site, whether if that's not on there. Road Commission, Drainage Commission approvals, Township Department approvals. And city approval. Anything else that would need to be included in that motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Two things. First off, in the reference to the wall, I would suggest you add the words noise abatement wall. And then secondly, do we have to? Vote on the special land use first? Or do those joint?
They should be separate motions.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what order. Makes a difference.
Vote on the special land use first and then the site plan. I think.
I would make it, this is Vince. I would make another comment. I think. There's less risk in waiting for one month. Because of some of the issues that we raised. And then if that's done, I would strongly support what Dolores said. That any planning commissioner member not present tonight and present at the next meeting, that they do their homework. And now we go have to go through and rehash all of this again, you know, for the courtesy of those members that are present. So from that standpoint, I would support a delay for a month. Because I think it's to the applicant's advantage because the comment was made one way or the other. Well. I'd be concerned about if the other happened. Tonight.
So are you, are you wanting to make a motion to table? I would have to withdraw my motion first, I think. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. I believe I would have to withdraw my motion first unless you rule it out of order for lack of a second. What are your thoughts on whether you want to do that or not? I'll withdraw it if Vince would like to make a motion.
I'll be happy to do that. I would be happy to make a motion to table this discussion till our next planning commission meeting. And have the applicant address the issues that Dan has listed on his summary.
You'd feel more comfortable seeing some concrete information, it sounds like. Before you make a decision. Okay, there's a motion. There's support for that motion. Second, second. Okay, we're going to do individual. Votes for this. There's a motion to. Table the site plan and special land use action. For the next planning commission meeting in order for the applicant to address the items that we've discussed. Motion was made by Mr. Van Dersky. There was support by Mr. Yanso, Yansho. So I think we'd like to go down. The list. And. Saying. Mr. Anderson?
I would vote no.
Okay. Mr. Yansho?
Yeah.
Ms. Colter?
Yes.
Oh, yes, vote, just to be clear, is to table. Mr. What do we have left here?
Johnson?
Mr. Johnson.
I'd go yes to table.
All right. My, the list of people have disappeared from here. For some reason, ah, it's in behind here.
Yellings.
Mr. Van Dersky.
Yes.
All right. So we. I'll vote yes as well. The motion passes five to one according to my.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion that? With the, prior to the next meeting or with the meeting packet, packet that goes out for the next meeting, that we have a list of all the proposed. Conditions in the event that we do decide to, you know, vote to approve. So we have something in writing to look at because I know there's, I have trouble keeping track of all of the conditions that we've been discussing. That would be helpful. Thanks.
All right, so Planning Commission is. Voted to table this until next. Available meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
With the intent that that would be next month?
Correct. I believe that is April 1st.
April Fool's Day.
Interesting. Is there anything else we need to talk about?
Yeah, this is Vince. I would just like to make a brief comment relative to all the discussion on noise. There was nothing said about railroads. End of comment.
If I may make a comment on that as well, because I did think about that and that crossed my mind is there are railroad tracks directly behind that house, the houses, I should say, in that area. The railroad tracks were there before the houses were built. So I think any houses built there, they knew the tracks were there and knew there'd be that noise. Or anybody that purchased a home, I should say, along there, the tracks were the first. I grew up. It's maybe a quarter mile away from a set of railroad tracks. Get used to that noise. You hear them, but you kind of expect, know when to expect them. There's kind of a routine to it. We're looking at building something new where residential houses already exist. So that's why I want to give that extra consideration on the increased sound, the change in sound.
Well. The railroad isn't going to change whether. No matter what goes in here, right? no matter what goes in here, right?
That's going to have absolutely zero effect on what goes in here, you know, my, my point is just that, that in consideration of residential area, they, they knew the tracks were there when they purchased the homes and they chose to build their homes there anyway, but now we're looking at changing adjacent property to those homes, kind of changing their, I don't want to say environment, sorry, whatever they're not, but
All right, I guess I wanted to say, I appreciate the, really appreciate the public comments that we received, and we take that very seriously, and I'm glad that you showed up and voiced your opinion. What we have to do is balance what the ordinance allows or doesn't allow as well as the public comment, so it isn't a black and white situation. Let's go. What I've got to say, we, we really appreciate it when we get public comment, we've had, we've had planning commission meetings when there, there isn't any public that shows up and we don't know what the feeling is of the adjacent residents, so this helps us to point out things that we need to consider, we appreciate that. All right, so we're all set with the special land use or discount tire at this point? And I'm presuming that the applicant can drop off, the only thing we've got left, I believe, on our agenda, if I can find it, is committee reports.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Schrum, before I drop off, I just wanted to thank all of you for your time tonight, we appreciate it.
Thanks for the comment. So moving on with our agenda, next item would be committee reports, township board, Hugo is not here. Planning and zoning, is there anything from Ms. Bame?
Yes, I would like to share, and this, I guess, could somehow tie in with the township board report. Just to let the planning commission know that I was asked to present the township master plan that you just adopted to the township board, which was interesting, because as you know, we did not work on it, but I went through it. I, I really, I enjoyed reading it, I, I appreciated all of the historical information that was included in that master plan. I did speak with Leah as well about the process and about the, she was very, and we had a good conversation about, about what went into and everything, and I know that the planning commission worked very hard and very long on that document. Township board, I think, had some questions about some of the areas that had been changed on the future land use map, but what they asked was to be able to pull some comments together following that presentation and then potentially have a joint meeting with the planning commission and the township board. And we were looking to do that the last week in March, because those are fifth days of the week, fifth days of the month, excuse me. So I believe Mr. Limada was checking with township board and I was to ask the planning commission for your availability, March 29th, 30th, or 31st. And that would really give the planning commission an opportunity to go deeper into some of the conversations with the township board members about the planning process, the things that you looked at, the considerations for some of the areas on the future land use map and some of your strategies to move that all ahead.
Those dates that you mentioned would be a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
This is Vince, I'm available any day.
I would prefer either Tuesday or Wednesday. I don't know what other planning commission members?
Tuesday or Wednesday works better for me, too. I could make either, but Wednesday's a little more flexible.
All right, all right.
Any of the dates I mentioned are fine for me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a comment to add. In today's Grand Blank newspaper, there's an article about the parents in, I think it's Spring Harbor, up by where I-75, I or, what is it, 375? What's the route that's going through, no? Bird Highway, that have complained to the township board. And so that's really, I think, the reason behind that, because they're complaining for the change in land usage. So for the other planning commissioners members, look to your paper, it was published today, or mailed today, I should say, there's an article on that very subject.
Certainly one of the topics that they, that they want to discuss, I'm not sure it's going to be just limited to that.
Well, no, but the door is open for them.
Any other insight, Mr. Laddie, that we should think about?
Well, you, you, you recall, I think in November, we, the, the township board sent some correspondence, actually, they asked me to send it regarding one of the, it, it, and I think they're primarily looking at the future land use map and, and the half dozen or so parcels that, that we looked at and, and made some changes to, so I think if, I think that's, that's the category of, of the discussion, and Vince points out one that they've gotten, we got comments on last meeting as well, but we also have had comments from them on other pieces as well, so I think they're kind of looking at the, at the future land use map and, and maybe looking for some insight into how we arrived where we did.
Anything else, Ms. Bame?
I believe that's all for now.
Next item would normally be zoning board of appeals, Mr. Brown is not here. No, no report on that, and then site plan review, we have not seen any site plans in the last month, the last site plan that we did see, if I remember correctly, was the discount tire in January.
And you will be seeing one hopefully next week?
Yes, I believe there's a site plan review committee meeting scheduled for next Wednesday.
Correct, five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
That is for consideration of the pediatric dentist?
Dentist.
That's correct.
Coming in for initial review.
Yep, and I, I will be there for that, and it was nice to meet all of you this evening.
Thank you, good to meet you as well.
Yes.
I would then think that brings us to a motion for adjournment.
This is Vince, and I will make that motion, but before I do, Jill, just hang on afterwards, I have a quick comment with you.
Okay.
I make a motion that we adjourn today's planning meeting at 9:39 PM.
Motion by Mr. Van Dersky to adjourn, support by
Anderson.
Mr. Johnson.
I heard Mr. Anderson.
Either way, he's fine with me, I think we kind of hold
Mr. Support by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to say? All right, we're adjourned, thanks. Thanks for everybody's input.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.